Hello, my name is Taylor Kingman. I'm president of the school board for the SASD. And I'd like to welcome all of y'all to our meeting this evening. As you all know, this is a regular board meeting, so it will be recorded and viewed on our public access channel, Channel 4. And I appreciate the fact that all of you are here today to look at the activities of our district and the business of our district. All items that will be discussed today at our meeting and this evening will be posted and have been posted as required by state law. And also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month. And if most, if not all, items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda workshop. As a member of the SASD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, prior to taking any votes on action items, we will ask audience members if they would like to make any public comment. We also have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action item or action agenda, an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room prior to the start of tonight's meeting, should you want to speak on an issue not on our action agenda. As we go through public comment, please remember that each speaker will be given a total of five minutes or less to speak. You will be notified when your time is up. You are to stop speaking and return to your seat. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated. And comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on your form you filled out. And any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance policy. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to the district administration for information about the grievance process. If you have a pending grievance, please be respectful of that process and do not discuss that grievance during public comment. Also, please understand, if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda, that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments, since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SASD's permanent legal record. In order that that recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking to others while speaking. And I also ask and remind my fellow board members to turn off or silence their cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SASD. With that, we have a quorum. We have six of our seven members tonight. Ms. Duncan had previous engagement and would not be able to attend tonight. With that, I'm going to ask Father Freddie Perez to come up for invocation. He's the director of the Angelo State University Catholic Newman Center.
Proverbs 1 through 12, and then leading us in a prayer of invocation for the school year and for your blessing on your life. Wisdom 9, 1 through 12. Wisdom has built her house. She has set up her seven pillars. She has slaughtered her beast. She has mixed her wine. She has also set her table. She has sent out her maids to call from the highest places in the town. Whoever is simple, let him turn and hear. To him who is without sense, she says, "Come, eat of my bread and drink of the wine I have mixed." Leave simpleness and live and walk in the way of insight. He who corrects a scoffer gets himself abuse. He who reproves a wicked man and cures injury. Now reprobe a scoffer, or he will hate you. Reprobe a wise man, and he will love you. Give instruction to a wise man, and he will be still wiser. Teach a righteous man, and he will increase in learning. The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom. And the knowledge of the Holy One is insight. For by me your days will be multiplied and years will be added to your life. If you are wise, you are wise for yourself. If you scoff, you alone will bear it. Heavenly Father, we give you great thanks, Lord, for this opening year, opening meeting, as the schools have opened. Heavenly Father, fill our life with that terrible fear. Not a fear based on death, but a fear based on how terrible you are and then all sightful being in our life. Allow us, Lord, to make decisions based on justice, equity, and to always look out for the poor. Give us a heart that craves for you. Or God of Abraham, we ask for your blessing upon us. I ask for the blessing of our Lord Jesus Christ in my tradition, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Thank you so much. My Lord bless you this year.
Thank you, Father Perez. We now have two students to come lead us in our pledge of allegiance to both the United States and Texas. We have Nadia Alvarado, who's a senior at Central High School, and Daniel Ledesma, who's a senior at Lakeview High School. Everyone join me in standing facing the flag. All right, we are going to move forward with recognitions now. Our first recognition will be for the San Angelo Reads Summer Book Patrol Partners.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and distinguished members of the board. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing three outstanding community partners and supporters of public education and literacy. HEB, Toys for Tots, and B Theater. With the help of these community partners, we were able to supply 45 students and their 81 siblings with books and goodies during the summer. Thank you to HEB, Toys for Tots, and B Theater for helping us spread the love of reading and helping students to become something substantial, meaningful, and impactful. By contributing to the Summer Book Patrol with generosity, energy, and dedication, you helped us to not only ignite a love of literacy, but also to make students feel special and connected to our schools during the summer months. For those who did not get to attend one of the deliveries, the children's and families' faces and excitement were a testament to this. HEB helped us by providing healthy snacks and goodie bags for not only the students selected for the book delivery, but also for every child in the household. Toys for Tots graciously donated books to include in the book deliveries. And B Theater generously provided t-shirts and books to include in the book deliveries. The contributions really helped us to elevate the summer program to stand out to the kiddos, their families, and for this, we thank you. Tonight, we are honored to have joining us, and accepting this recognition for HEB, Unit Director of the 5502 Sherwood Way Store, David Rodriguez, and accepting for Toys for Tots Campaign Coordinator, Gypsy Serna, and Tony Gutierrez. And accepting for B Theater Managing Director, Kelly Osborne, and Artistic Director, Sidney Timmer. Dr. Detloff, at this time, would you please help me recognize HEB, Toys for Tots, and B Theater? And Mr. Rodriguez, Ms. Serna, Mr. Gutierrez, Ms. Osborne, and Ms. Timmer, we would like for you to come forward as well for a group photo. Please join me in giving HEB, Toys for Tots, and B Theater a very appreciative round of applause on behalf of our board members, admin, faculty, staff, and students of SASD.
All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda. Next on our agenda is our minutes. We have minutes from our July 10, 2023 workshop, our July 10, 2023 pre-agenda workshop, another July 17 workshop, which was superintendent search firms, July 17 regular board meeting, and then July 26, Team of Eight training. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes A through E?
Make a motion to approve minutes A through E?
Second, for anyone? So we have a we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mrs. Arroyo. All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. We will move forward. So that passed 6-0. Next is for public comments for topics not on the agenda of this meeting. And it looks like we have one person sign up, Mr. Pachetti. If you'd like to come forward, please introduce yourself and use the microphone.
Hello, my name is Virgil Pachetti, and I am a concerned father. Hadn't been here for a couple of months. Just trying a different tactic. I thought maybe if I let things calm down and was clearly defined in what my requests were for this upcoming school year, that that would help, but unfortunately, it didn't. So I'm going to just do what I do know, and that's going to come and try to be an advocate for my son. I mean, as you know, for the last five years, been trying to get him extra help with gifted and talented. Been told that he's not gifted. Got him tested, he's in 97 percentile for IQ. I was told most districts would take that as a way to let them in. You know, concerns me that he takes a test and misses it by one point, and so he's not allowed to have any of the access to any of those things. But we have members that work for this school district that had zero experience, and we're allowed to come into their job and learn it. So I'm just wondering why they don't have to take the test. But my son has to, just to have access to that stuff. And then I said, okay, if you're not going to let him in there, at least tell me what you do over there so that I can teach it to him. And I'm told by members that are in here today that we don't know what they do at Fort Concho STEM Lab. We don't know what their curriculum is. They don't even write it down, so you can't even do a FOIA request. So we can't even tell you what they do over there. So not only can he not be in it, we can't even tell you what they do. And these are director lever of management in here. So how do we not know what they're doing over there? I'll never know. So the only thing I can do is teach my son what I do know. And so I started, with his help, a little newspaper called The Not Gifted News. And so we're going to try, through the power of the press, to try to put pressure on the school district to maybe share some of that curriculum at Fort Concho with the kids that aren't not gifted. The ones that were just one point off. You know? I think they deserve to at least know. And if you look through here, it says, you know, hey, here's our mission statement. The Not Gifted Newspaper was started. Our primary goal is to share with the public the things that the administration and Communication Department won't tell you. We want to put kids first, and our plan is to publish one article a month. It's nothing special, but we're going to try our best. The next thing, and I have several FOIA requests that I gave to Molly, and I hope y'all don't go through and whitewash and redact everything, because y'all say you're here for transparency. So I'm going to give you a chance. And then when you say that we don't have this data or we don't have a report exactly the way that you asked for it, so we can't give you any data, then that's fine, you're just going to give me something to give to the public. Please don't tell me anything, and I'll tell them how transparent you are. And the four items that I'm worried about? King's Clean doesn't meet the expectations of Lone Star Middle School. So SASD sends that crew to three elementary campuses. So now, instead of having a security scan at one school, we have it at three. So
You have one minute remaining.
Says I have two, because I started my timer. SASD curriculum, are we teaching equity or equality? Why are the equity payment and adjustments for elitist administrators but not for frontline teachers? And should administrators who received equity pay raises in June, July, also get the pay raise in August? Are we going to double dip? And Fort Concho Stems has such an advanced STEM lab, why other campuses barely got one this year? Why can't anybody in the administration share those activities and lessons that place at this premier lab with us? Next time, I'll bring a big clock so that we can all watch it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pachetti. All right, we're going to move forward with reports. First, we have a construction update from Mr. Henry. I skipped one, I apologize. Item 7 is consider in order authorizing defeasance. Is that right? Is that how I say it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, good evening. Currently, yearly bond payment amounts are calculated and an estimated interest and sinking tax rate, our INS rate, is set to collect the minimum amount of funds needed to make the yearly payment. Defeasance allows for additional funds to be collected in excess of the yearly payment as long as the funds are ultimately used to pay down outstanding debt. And of the experts, very familiar to San Angelo ISD, Mr. Jeff Robert with Hilltop Securities here this evening and going to kind of give us a rundown, see any questions, answer any questions that you have, as he's certainly an expert.
Brandon Kingman, Dr. Detloff, Jeff Robert, Hilltop Securities, outdone by San Angelo Central Bobcat class of 90. That ought to go Bobcats. But Dr. Kingman, you did a good job of pronouncing that word. One that, quite honestly, before the meeting, I didn't really have any exposure to the defeasance term in six years of undergrad and graduate business school. And it really has not been something that has been very prevalent, especially over the last seasons takes into account now. So I've got just a one-pager that I'll go through. I'll go ahead and talk about it a little. So normally, whenever you're paying waste, redemption, redemption on all of certain bonded immediately pay them expired payoff paying agent invoice. On a defeasance
Not getting picked up by the odd guy.
Sorry. On a defeasance, the bond issue that you're paying off or maturities from that bond issue are not yet called. So what you do is place funds in interest-bearing escrow account, close. Funds go into that escrow account, earn interest, they make the payments on different maturity thing or paying they pay those all day for maturity day. So the reason you haven't seen very many defeasance being fixed again is put money into an interest-bearing escrow account, but your escrow wasn't so you have to, in essence, overfund escrow, which makes sense, but now, short-term rates at five plus percent, put money into an so if you recall back in 2020, height of COVID, we took advantage of very low interest rates at that time. We did a bond refunding or refinancing, saved $7.00. We had to do it as a taxable issue, as tax for back in 2017, which ultimately still allowed us to save 7.8 million, but it allows us to do defeasance in an economic way as well. If we were to defees tax-exempt issuance, our escrow rate would be capped. We would only be able to earn a certain level in our escrow account. But because it's a taxable transaction, we can earn the highest level which makes the savings much more attractive. Lot of numbers on, what we're looking at is these $1,070 from the Series 2020 bond issue. Go to the bottom there.
I'm going to interrupt you for just saying, just can you make that bigger on the screen? Thank you.
Listen to the microphone, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, okay. So a lot of numbers here, but what we're looking at and what this shows is the defeasance of $1,070,000 from Series 2020 taxable bond issue. So if you go in columns two, three, and four, that would be the principal and interest that would be defeased or paid off. So in September of this year, in column five, we would place $1,015,000 into an interest-bearing escrow account. And then the savings, you can see over on the right, we have the ability to do this defeasance and be within the INS budget. We're not going to be tapping any of your INS fund balance. And you can see the savings. So we have the capacity to have just under $1,000,000 placed into, on a net basis, in column six, placed into the fund in 24. And then you can see what the interest savings would be in years out. So ultimately, this $1,015,000 deposit would pay off $1,070,000. So we're getting better than one font on our dollars, paying off a $1,015,000 principal, a $1,015,000 a little bit more, once again, because our interest rates are attractive in our escrow account. And ultimately, the projection is that we would save a little over $240,000 in column six. The reason why we're talking about doing this in September 23 versus waiting until you get tax collection because we are sensitive to what interest rates can do. Interest rates have come up on the short end very, very quickly, and they come down very, very quickly. So our thought is that we'll use INS fund balance to go ahead and lock in rates in September. I feel a little more comfortable about where rates are going to be in September versus early next year. And then you'll just replenish that INS fund balance when you receive your tax collections in early next year. So if the board were to adopt the defeasance order, we would probably move forward with this as quickly after September 1 as possible, since that's the turn of your fiscal year, starts on I flew through that and was kind of fumbling around a little bit. If there's any questions, I'd be
So one, and I just want to make sure I understand it also. Obviously, the money saving is, everyone likes saving money. The other thing this does is project it, and we'll, obviously, we haven't approved anything for another week. We're projecting to lower the tax rate this year on our INS. And so if excuse me, we're projected to lower our tax rate on our M and O. And so depending on what state funding does, this gives us a little more flexibility to possibly reduce, pay off this upfront now, so that if we need, or if we are able to lower our INS in the future, when the tax rate isn't going to be lowered by state legislature, we could turn around and do that for our public if appraisals went up. But we did not get funding from the state like it appears that we're going to get this year. Is that true?
That's true. I mean, you'll have the flexibility on an annual basis to look at what your INS budget looks like. And with level payments, you know, you're correct. It should, tax appraisals continue to go up.
And this is only a one-year issue at the moment. We could theoretically come back and look at doing this again next year if interest rates were high. But this is only a one-year commitment of funds for right now.
That's correct.
So in essence, we're not increasing our INS rate at all. We're just maintaining the INS rate, leaving it the same, collecting the extra funds and then paying down our long-term debt.
Correct. And that's, to go back to Dr. Kingman's point, the lowered M and O rate and INS staying the same as last year. You can see from the chart, the district would still propose a lower overall total tax rate from 97 cents to 81 cents. So the public will see substantial reduction in tax rate overall, even keep INS the same last year.
Just as a point of reference, the state's able to do that by the excess funds they've collected over the last biennium. So they have pledged to contribute additional dollars to the education fund, so their part increases where the the tax collected locally will go down. But everything's been paid in already, so the state is graciously going to let us have some of those local dollars back by paying down some of their surplus. Somewhat correct?
That's somewhat correct, and it's not only on the tax rate compression that Dr. Brandon mentioned, but also the fact that that exempt 1,000 to 100,000. So taxpayers in San Angelo ISD are not only going to see their tax rate go down substantially, but it's likely that the taxable value that they pay on, on their homes for the majority citizens will go down as well as a result of
Yeah, helps considerably. Yes, sir. Thank you. It helps the taxpayer considerably, but it doesn't affect our budget too much in the end run.
That's correct. The pie is still the same, but the portion of the pie coming from locally is lower. The portion that comes from state. That's hopefully what they've committed, hopefully it can
Will be gaining from the state.
That's correct.
From the 97 to the 86.
That's right. Be held harmless.
And just because, just so we, everyone understands, as far as school finance, we kind of have two buckets. We have our M and O, and I know, y'all know this, but we have an M and O and an INS. And so what we're going to do is we're going to borrow from ourselves in the INS in order to lock in, excuse me, borrow from ourselves in the M and O in order to lock in the rate for our INS over the next three months. Is that what you were saying, from our fund balance, basically?
No, sir, we're not going to touch your M and O fund balance. This is going to
It's our INS fund balance.
Coming from your INS fund balance, yes, sir. We don't want to touch your M and O fund balance. I'm glad you clarified that. I, yes, I probably should have done a better job of associating with the INS fund balance, not the M.
And what is our current INS fund balance?
Approximately three million INS fund.
And those numbers are basically replaced based on the fact that our rates have been higher over the last, that three million is reflected from the rates being higher over the last year for the most part. Any further questions? So we will need a motion in order to use funds that we currently have in fund balance in the INS bucket to pay down, to lock in the rates. So we do need a motion and a second to approve that if we want to do that.
Dr. Kingman, I'd move to approve the order authorizing defeasance to allow additional INS funds to be collected and held until such time as the funds are allowable to be used to pay down the bond debt.
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Ms. Mydell Flint. Do we have any further board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Or against, say the same. Six oh. Thank you for being here. Appreciate you. I know you're out of where?
In Dallas.
Dallas. No, right. Well, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Now we're going to move forward with the construction update that I tried to skip Mr. Rogers for earlier. Jason's going to come forward for us.
Dr. Detloff, Dr. Kingman, members of the board, tonight we have Ty Sisco from Arkhill Architects. Give us a review of the projects included in our sustainability projects at Fannin and McGill.
Real quickly. At McGill, the owner contractor agreement signed. I'll have a pre-construction so soon urban designer review has been approved. And the site planning process is also there were a few comments or questions fire marshal that were working really request for more. And Lee Lewis has currently fenced off the construction area to and we met on site on eleven fencing and the other site-related issues. Let's see, this is showing really there here, but the sewer line will be the first. Relocating the sewer line will be the first item that they take care of to get that out of the way so they can keep going with construction on the rest of the site. You can kind of see that yellow line that goes around towards Sherwood there on the bottom. That's the current location. Yes, sir. And so we're we're giving some more room for construction by going towards Sherwood. Yes, sir. So that's their plan to go ahead and get that started because they need to get it installed. And then that way they can switch it over without losing service to the building. So that's the plan.
Is that going to involve a lift station or were we able to do it without one?
It does not.
Good. Perfect. That's good. Good news.
Over at Fannin, construction continues. We've gone through approximately fifty percent of the project submittals, which is a good sign. Subcontractors are getting all their information in. It's being reviewed. And so we're moving forward with that. We're having meetings every other, every other week. And so we'll continue to have more pictures and updates as construction continues. Right now, there's not a whole lot to show. The sewer line has been installed and approved by the city, which is a good sign. And you can see some earthwork going on there, utility lines being dug. You see some of the compacted subgrade there. So early on in the process, but making making good progress. So any questions?
So what's next? No, with that side.
On this side, yeah, they'll they're they'll just continue their earthwork and utility installation, then they'll move forward to the slab. Then steel, you know, from the ground up, they'll just keep progressing.
Ty, are we going to be in about twenty twenty-four? August of twenty twenty-four?
August.
Of twenty twenty-four?
That's what we're hoping. Well, if if we don't get rained out, right?
We're running that real tight, aren't we?
Seems to be the way they they go.
The best laid plans.
That's right. The weather's cooperating at this point.
Yeah, you picked a great month for August because it won't rain in August.
Thank you for that firm answer, Mr. Sisco. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisco. Jason, do you have anything else under construction? That's it. Okay. So now, Mr. Colm Box is going to come up and give us a safety update report and we're going to be intruder detection audits summary.
Yes, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, thank you. Just a real quick update on, we had the last three of the audits that went on all last year that came after our last board meeting. So this wraps us up for the whole year. And fortunately, we, the effort with the controlled access was the, it was already in place to be installed at the school. So it is the fix to any findings that they found. So it was already in the works. So that's really all there is to report about those last three audits. And then that wraps us up for all of the audits for last year. And we'll start again. Who knows how soon? So any questions or?
Just since we're on safety, as far as audits, you said we'll start again, basically immediately. I mean, I know they're not really they're scheduled, but they're not scheduled. We can't schedule them out loud. And then and then as far as the fix, which is the crux system, that's going well as far as getting up and running and first for school?
It's it's going well. As far as it's it's implemented in phases. And so like we're working on, we've run into quite a few little snags as far as like the new badges that are printing. So we're, we've made some progress on that in the last few days. And then so there's installation, I believe, I don't want to speak out of turn, but the elementaries and central in phase one. And so the audits, though, are the ones from the state. They're unannounced and we expect last year, they didn't start until September, but who knows, but we have some experience now going through this last year. So that's good.
And our internal audits, how are those? Have we we've started those already?
We have, and we had to, the the governor mandated new identifying stickers on all external doors. That's been quite an operation that is in progress. So he, the mandate is how big they are. We had to change every single sticker on every external door because they mandated them to be four inches. The material had to be reflective. And even the width of the lettering was, so that is in progress. So our internal audits, we use those to monitor which doors are being checked. Are they operating correctly? Were they locked when we got to them? All of that. So we're having to switch that over as we switch to the new giant stickers that are now on the doors. So it's going to be a process that's probably going to take it's going to take probably, we might, we might be, it might take us a couple of weeks to get all the campuses done. There's eight hundred and eight doors and they have to be printed. Oh, yeah. That's the external doors. And it's all external doors on every building. It doesn't matter whether it's inside a fence, outside of a fence. That was the other part of it. So it's every external door and it has to be numbered a certain way by mandate. In other words, you have to start at the front door and go clockwise. It's very specific about what, how the doors have to be numbered. So it's for first responders. So if they show up to any building at any school and they see a number, if they get word of what number they need to go to, they can, they don't even have to be looking at a map. They know the direction that the numbers go. So it's it's not a it's not a bad thing. It's just a huge shift from what what we've had in the past. So it will, it'll be a good thing. It's just they're large and
Well, I think we we all appreciate your work on that. We appreciate our teachers and all our staff's vigilance on that as well. Obviously, school security is of the utmost importance. And so we appreciate all the work you're doing on that. And obviously, our teachers and staff and principals and custodians and everyone else are doing a lot of work to make sure those doors stay locked and closed. So we appreciate all that work.
Yeah, and I'll just say one last thing in in to reference what you're saying about the way our staff, in every single audit last year, we were a hundred percent in the people who came on to try to get on campus. They were exposed. Like someone said, you don't have any credentials and took them to the office. So it it shows how aware our staff are and how well they follow the procedures and pay attention to details. It's really, that's a big deal because there was a lot of audits and there's a lot of opportunity for somebody to try to walk on campus. So that's a good thing for our district.
All right. Thank you. We will move forward with update on academic programs, Dr. Gomez. And I'm sure you guys say this, but for those who are normally watching, usually we have our STAR report in August, but that's not going to happen this August. And so we're going to hear our academic update from you for right now. Stay tuned for that one.
Yes, sir. Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Typically, we do have STAR information from the state at this time, but that will be released in September as we've previously shared. So this evening for our academic report, we will, you've heard us talk a whole lot over the summer months about professional learning and all the things that were happening when students were away from our buildings. So we want to recap on our laser focus to support SA ISD's fundamental five, which you all are quite aware of as we talk about these and all of our work from our district goals, our learner profile, educator profile, community-based accountability system, and capturing kids' hearts. All of our professional learning that took place since school was out in the month of June, July, and then just as recent as this August, supported the fundamental five. But this year, you will hear us talk specifically about a laser focus in SA ISD around what we're referring to our three big rocks. So it's really putting all our efforts to support these specifically. We know in education, we like a lot of acronyms. So MTSS stands for multi-tiered system of support. And you'll see it listed both with an A and a B because we lift these up both around academics and behavior. All of our professional learning is supporting how our students are doing both academically and behaviorally. And then you'll also hear us talk about intentional scheduling. As a school board, when you all approved and supported all of our elementary campuses having interventionist, also all of our elementary campuses having STEM staff, so all of our students K through five would have a robust STEM experience before entering middle school. As we work and support campuses, that professional learning is very specific on, here we have the training on best practices, but also how are we being very intentional with the scheduling of these staff members to serve all of our students based on evidence. In the second big rock, you'll hear us talk about specific to SA ISD's data on multiple forms of assessment, one of those being state assessments, but also MAP, EM class, and other assessments are around two special subpopulations specific to special education and emergent bilingual. And then lastly, it's the culture and the environment in which we do this work together with collective efficacy because we know the real work comes down when the teacher closes that door and they're teaching in their classroom. So that's through professional learning communities where teachers and administrators have shared accountability. And we work specifically around what you'll hear referred to as the four questions. So think of a PLC as a team of teachers, you can pick any grade level, coming together to say, okay, let's look at this assessment. How did your students do? How did my students do? These aren't just my students and your students, they're our students. So what worked? What can you share? What 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 may we need to do differently? So again, we'll lift up these three big rocks and want to show you how all of this professional learning supported these three areas specifically. You heard us talk about Learning Palooza in July. You heard us talk about People Purpose Passion with our non-instructional staff. And then here most recently in August, on the calendar that you all approved, all staff returned on August ninth. We saw you guys on August tenth for convocation. Then we had two district-wide, August tenth, excuse me, for convocation. Sorry, I'm Mr. Gagos. We did miss you. We did miss you for that rock concert farewell tour. On Friday, the eleventh, all of our staff in SA ISD, K through high school that were core teachers had professional learning around professional learning communities and how teachers do that work collectively. And that professional learning was provided by Solution Tree, who's one of the leaders in in that work nationwide, just not in the state of Texas. Then on Monday, August fourteenth, when we come and we talk about state assessments, those only begin in third grade. We don't start looking to see how our students are doing in third grade when we have assessment data. We start the day a student enters our classroom. So in K through two specifically, we were reviewing data that we had and knew we had a need to have a very systematic approach to phonics. So on the fourteenth, when all of our other staff were in professional learning around those two subpopulations, special education or emergent bilingual, we pulled all K through two teachers to work specifically on phonics because when students have a solid reading instruction system from the onset of entering school, that's going to directly impact subpopulations where we can use data to see was it effective instruction? Or was there something else that might be prohibiting the student from learning to read at the rate they should be? And then all the other educators from teachers, administrators, counselors, nurses, matter your role, they attended professional learning around special education or emergent bilingual. So again, supporting those three big rocks. And then last week or on the eighth, we had a week in between, we gave an update on Tiny Texans. This was very important to us to come back to the board so that you could see. And we do have one of these young difference makers here is the child of Mr. Ramirez and Mr. Ramirez. And the other sweet little young lady on there is the child of one of our Lamar difference makers. But this year, you all approved us expanding Tiny Texans where last year we had approximately twenty babies only at Crockett. This year, we have two additional sites. We also have Tiny Texans at San Jacinto and Tiny Texans at Blackshear Learning Center. And we are serving eighty-six babies. Of those approximately eighty are staff members. And we do have for our early childhood special education parents that are in the three-year-old program where that program for us is only a half day. We have one student being served so that that family does not have a hardship in the off time when their student is not in our early childhood special education program. We wanted you to see these little difference makers when we have the ribbon cutting later on in September. We definitely want to take you all through there. And then there's just some snippets. So you can hear straight from staff. They gave us permission. I know you can't read that email. But it's I won't read teachers' names even though they gave permission. This email came to me and Mrs. Fintris and just said, I just wanted to shoot you both a quick email and just thank you for working with me on getting her child a spot at Tiny Texans. I'm a huge advocate for special needs kids. In the past couple of months, I was really feeling depleted. So thank you again. It is wonderful. It is going to be a wonderful year for him. We are so thankful for SA ISD and our special programs. So just things they all need to hear. So just things y'all need to hear. When we talk about supporting staff in all capacities, when you can go over as they're leaving their own students in our facilities and the look of relief that their children are in good hands makes all the difference. So in a time when we have less staff available, we definitely believe that this is an effective retention strategy. And because of our expanded facilities, we were also able to add it on to a recruitment strategy because we were permitted for more spaces. And this is just another email too, talking about Blackshear staff and how they care for her daughter. We're all a little partial to this little girl. I have been guilty of holding her myself. She's really hard to let go because she, she's just super sweet as all of our children are. She goes on to say, they always spend the day to talk to me and update me on her day or show pictures. As you both know, this mama needs that. She goes on to brag on the teacher and the communication from her teacher. But she closes with saying, thank you for providing a safe and amazing place for my little girl to learn. So we just wanted to close with that for all of you for thank you for allowing us to expand these services to our staff throughout SAISD. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Dr. Gomez, do we have additional capacity to expand the program?
It depends on the age. So the most sought-after care in the community is for infants. Our infant rooms are all at capacity at all three sites. We do have some available space in the twos and threes that we've also expanded to staff, but infants were definitely full.
And just a question, our phonics program, that is replacing a previous phonics program? Or we had, are we adding something for the teachers to do? Or is that in a replacement on a program that we did not find as effective as we had hoped?
It's much more thorough and comprehensive. There were pieces that we were having to pull from multiple resources. And if you remember, the commissioner actually tasked, put it in statute, that we would have a phonics program, but then did not put out the approved list until last spring. And so it's in compliance with that. And we have print materials for K and one and digital materials for second grade.
Thank you.
And the, the teachers or staff are, are on board in finding this an effective program to move forward with?
The teachers and staff, and I don't want to be the only one to speak. There's a lot of other administrators in here. The feedback we've received is they're very grateful to have a resource available to them to use in their daily instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. Anyone have any other further questions? Dr. Detloff, partnership with Goodfellow?
Yes, sir, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. I'm proud to report that our support and partnership with Goodfellow Air Force Base extends beyond the work week and the regular school day. I believe it was August 12th, we had district leadership participate in the Air Force Ball Golf Tournament fundraiser. And I want to highlight this because these individuals use their personal funds to support this fundraising event. And the district team won the tournament. And we won the tournament by providing a lot of additional dollars from our own pocketbook to fundraise for these airmen and air women. So we appreciate the opportunity to purchase mulligans. We had great discussions with Colonel McGinnis, the commander at the Goodfellow Air Force Base. But I just wanted to extend our, really our gratitude for the continued partnership with them and that our, our leadership extends their partnership beyond the, the work week and they do that out of their own family budget. So thank you, and that's our, our report.
And where was that golf tournament held at?
All right, we will move forward. We have consent items A through E. That's consider donations. It's a bid 20 dash 014 for curriculum and instruction materials. It is item C, consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for school year 23, 24 with an additive of three at our desk today. Consider the extracurricular status of the 4-H organization and adjunct faculty, which is item D. And E, consider an update on the annual T-Test certified appraiser list. Do I have any comments or questions on items A through E? Do I have a motion to approve consent items A through E?
Make a motion to approve consent items A through E?
A second? So I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Dr. Mills. Any further board comment? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes six, zero. We now have item 10, which is consider bills, accounts and financial statements for June and July of 2023.
Dr. Kingman, move, move for approval of bills, accounts and financial states for June 23 and July 2023.
Second?
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any further board comment or public comment?
Just a note to those folks, Dr. Kingman, while they're watching on Channel 4, that all these reports were reviewed in detail at our pre-agenda meeting last week. And all these reports can also be found online in their entirety under a tab at SAISD called Financial Transparency.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mr. Gallegos. All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. All right, motion passes six, zero. We now have bid 23 dash 022, which is controlled lobbies. Sorry, Mr. Henry?
Over the past few years, the district has continued to add controlled lobbies to our campuses. This bid is for controlled lobbies to be added at Lakeview High School, Central High School and the administration building. With the assistance, assistance of KFW Architects, an RFP was prepared for companies qualified to do this type of work. Bids were received and four qualified vendors responded. Midtechs of Midland met all specifications and offered the lowest price of $357,582. The, the administration recommends contracting with Midtechs of Midland for the construction of three controlled lobbies at Lakeview High School, Central High School and the administration building. Total cost of this project is $357,582. A $10,000 contingency is included for each campus in that price. Do y'all have any questions over this?
So Mr. Henry, I know we've done some of these projects in-house and some out. With these three buildings, we will then have controlled entry. And we have controlled entry everywhere, but more robust controlled entry at all of our facilities, all of our, let's rephrase that, all of our campuses when this is finished?
Correct.
Any questions or board comment on this?
With that note, Dr. Kingman, I'd recommend that we contract with Midtechs Midland for the construction of the three controlled lobbies at Lakeview High School, Central High School and the administration building. Right now, the total cost of projects is $350,582 with a $10,000 contingency included for each campus.
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mrs. Mizell Flint. Any further board comment? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. All right, six, zero. All right, playground equipment, which is item 12, RFQ 23 dash 024. And Mr. Henry, you're up again.
During the 22, 23, 24 school year, we moved pre-K sites and this created a need for additional playground equipment at San Jacinto, Goliad and Reagan elementaries. An RFQ was prepared for buyboard vendors who supply playground equipment and perform this type of install work. Quotes were received and only one contractor submitted pricing for this project. Playgrounds, et cetera, of Midland is proposing a turnkey solution to provide all labor and materials for the four playgrounds needed. At this time, the administration recommends contracting with Playgrounds, et cetera, of Midland for the purchase and install of four playgrounds to be installed at San Jacinto, Goliad and Reagan elementaries. For the total price of $207,102 and a $20,000 contingency will be added to this price.
And just for clarification, Goliad will be getting two playgrounds just so when y'all are hearing the numbers?
Correct.
And when would those be installed by?
We've asked for them ASAP. We're thinking ordering a minimum of six to eight weeks before they'll even be available. Probably, yeah. That's what we're hoping for.
And these playgrounds are more pre-K specific?
Yes, they're 100% geared towards pre-K kids.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve playgrounds of Midland for the purchase of four playgrounds to be installed at San Jacinto, Goliad times two and Reagan Elementary? Just clarifying the Goliad times two thing.
A second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any further board comment? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes. So Dr. Detloff, we now have considered BED policy local?
Yes, sir, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. Every year, our Board of Trustees and Superintendent participate in governance training called the Team of Eight Training. We participated in this training again this summer. And from that came a couple of recommendations and updates. Some of these updates to our policy BED local were to more align us with districts across the state of Texas, the majority of districts across the state of Texas that are making these updates or have current policy in alignment with the proposed changes to BED local. These changes include that we would offer our public comment, reduce that from five minutes to three minutes per meeting, and then establish an overall time limit of 45 minutes of public comment during the course of a meeting. This would allow us to make sure that we move through the agenda effectively and efficiently and get to all items and action items on the agenda. So these are recommendations. Our board historically for many years has provided a public comment for items on the agenda and not on the agenda, and we will continue to do that. So at this time, the administration's recommend, recommendation is to change the policy from five minutes to three minutes and then an overall allocation of 45 minutes to public comment. An important note is that if a large number of constituents do show up and have a concern or celebration for a specific agenda item or a policy, the board's presiding officer can make adjustments to this policy and allow more time to ensure that we hear all public comment provided from our community. So there is an opportunity in this recommendation that the board's presiding officer could adjust the time limits based on the community's efforts and willingness to have public comment.
So one thing we discussed at Board of Eight Training was making sure that we had ample opportunity for all constituents to be able to discuss their concerns or celebrations. I think by doing this, it helps make sure that any constituent coming, doesn't feel like they're necessarily number 15 in the line and they're going to be here for 45 minutes and not, they didn't get here quick enough to answer the thing or to make their comment. The other thing we, we discussed was the fact that we by no means want to limit any public comment, but we do want to make sure that we can get the business finished of the meeting. But also that because public comment is typically on items that are not on the agenda, unfortunately, we can't respond to the public in regards to their concerns. And so for a lot of times, it's really good for us to get a, just like this evening, a comment on what their concerns are so we can look into it, we can ask administration about those public comments. But unfortunately, in a, due to the state law regarding public meetings, we can't respond. And so getting every parent and citizen the ability to comment and make their concerns known to the board is important to us so that we can then make sure those are being addressed with the administration team. Any other comments on update on BED local? Do we have a motion to approve the changes to BED local?
With that said, Dr. Kingman, I'd move to approve the changes to policy BED local.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Mrs. Mizell Flint. Any further board comment? Any further public comment? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes. All right, we are now, that gets us through our posted agenda for a regular meeting tonight, but we do need to go into executive session. We are doing that under item 551.074 Personnel Matters. And are we also? We're in also 551 dot 072 Real Property. All right, we'll be back. All right, we are, we have reconvenium from executive session. We took no action, we took no votes. Announcements is we have a special meeting to adopt our budget next Monday, August 28th at 5:45. We have our finance and pre-agenda workshop on September 11th. And we have a regular board meeting on September 25th. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.